I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance?
Jovanazi?
Here.
Alvarez?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Arcelia?
Yes.
Andalora?
Here.
Stephan.
Here.
This meeting of June ninth, two thousand twenty-five is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and notices of this meeting have been provided via the email to the Press of Atlantic City, The Daily Journal, on November ninth, two thousand twenty-four, as well as been posted on the municipal bulletin board and website at bunaburrow.org or gov. I'd like to, at this time, ask council and the public to recognize a moment of silence for a former councilwoman, Bernice Donato, who passed away. Bernice served on council from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen eighty-three. In fact, she was the first female councilwoman ever to be elected in Bunaburrow's history. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Bernice and her family. Thank you. Tonight's meeting with Krim Barcasting is being sponsored by Nation One Mortgage Corporation, Blaze Menzoni, branch manager. So again, we thank Blaze and his mortgage company for sponsoring this meeting tonight, along with Allen Associates. This evening, we have a few items on my report, and then I will give also a report. The first one is going to be a resignation letter from the occupancy department, just to let the public know, and this individual served in two positions. He resigned two of the positions, and we'll have two appointments to approve of this evening. So I'm going to go to Resolution one, twelve dash twenty-five. This is a resolution accepting the resignation of James Hoffman from the positions of code enforcement officer and occupancy inspector effective May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Motion to Stephan.
Second.
Second, Andalora. Roll call vote.
Jovanazi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Andalora?
Yes.
Stephan.
Yes.
Okay, since that time, myself, along with Councilman Jovanazi, who's the head of the inspections Department from council, did several interviews for the positions. And tonight, we have one of the two nominees. The first one is going to be James Sorrow. I've known Jimmy's here tonight. I've known Jimmy for almost fifty years. He has extensive background in the zoning and inspections offices. He's also an inspector himself in Washington Township, and is also chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. So Jimmy comes highly qualified, is what I'm saying, and we're glad to have him part of the borough tonight. So I'm going to entertain Resolution one thirteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution provisionally appointing James Sorrow to the position of code enforcement officer.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion, Andalora. Second, to Stephan. Roll call vote.
Jovanazi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Andalora?
Yes.
Stephan.
Yes.
Jim, congratulations and welcome aboard. Like to have you come up to get sworn in. At this time, Jim, if you're lucky enough, I will raise your right hand and repeat our committee. I, James Sorrow.
I, James Sorrow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey. And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God. I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Bunaburrow code enforcement officer.
Bunaburrow code enforcement officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution to appoint Trevor. He cannot make it here tonight, but he is a full-time inspector in the city of Millville, and will be coming to us again after resolution's passed this evening. So we have Resolution one fourteen dash twenty-five. This is a resolution provisionally appointing Trevor Spinato as housing inspector.
Motion.
Second, Andalora. Second, Adams. Roll call vote.
Jovanazi?
Yes.
Alvarez? Adams?
Yes.
Andalora? Yes.
Stephan.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation to be made by our fire consultant, TJ Cully, with the Bunaburrow Fire Department, and this is discussing an incentive that will boost our volunteer fire company participation, and the importance and significance of this. This is something we just didn't do. This has been in the makings for several months now. Between Chief Bar Bagley and TJ, myself, the Director of Public Safety, Adams, and our Finance Chairman Alvarez, we're looking at trying to give incentives to our newly-developed fire company to get more participation and even the younger generation involved. This is being done a lot of towns in the surrounding areas. TJ, who's the expert and has done extensive research on this, I asked him to come tonight versus Mayor Doug giving the explanation because this is what he does. So TJ, I'm going to give the floor to you. Again, council, this is just for councils, so if you have any questions afterwards, please feel free to ask TJ.
Good evening, members of council, mayor. Thanks for having me here tonight. It is a presentation, but if anybody's got questions along the way, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Very lucky last year to stand up the Bunaburrow Fire Department. It was a very strenuous effort by you guys and the members and other civilians within the town to come forward and volunteer. So you kind of ask yourself a year later, why are we putting together an incentive program? So as we all know, the world's changing every day. It's very hard to get people to volunteer their time. As soon as you tell a young person, I want you to come out, and there's no paying about them, they're there, they're active at first, and then they slowly die off as you go along. So you have to kind of like, you kind of have to incentivize them, just like the ordinance says. In the ordinance itself, it goes into detail, not as much detail as what we have in the policy that was drafted by all of us in the past month, two months, but the ordinance, when you, I'm sure you all read it and reviewed it because you're going to be going over it tonight, it goes through at a pretty good level, but when you get down to the meat and potatoes of it is, how do I get for the chief, when chief goes out tonight to go to a CO alarm, how do we get the people to turn out of bed at two in the morning to go to the CO call at Mrs. Smith's house, that she's already called twice in the past month, and it's a detector that's malfunctioning? It sounds great, the chief will more likely get there, and he'll satisfy it within the first couple of minutes, and Mrs. Smith will go back to bed, and the chief goes about his way. But on the other hand, go to Mrs. Smith's house, and it's not the CO detector this time, her house is on fire. But everybody was complacent and said, oh, well, the chief will take care of it. So how do you get these members to get out, the current members that you have now? So that's the purpose of this, recruitment and retention. So the retention part of it is, is how do we get the members to turn out, right? So you incentivize them. Part of the ordinance is pay per call. So you're going to pay them as a town for every call that they go to. Sounds like it gets pretty extensive. And then there's also the other part of it is during the day, when everybody's at work, you know, people work in construction jobs, they're working hospitals, they're working a ship, your manpower, your pool of manpower goes down. So how does the chief guarantee that he still tries to stay within the NFPA requirements of he turns an apparatus out with proper staffing on it? You staff it with what's called a standby crew. And the standby crew can, they're not required to be at the firehouse, but they're required to be at the firehouse within four minutes of the pagers going off. And that standby crew would be Monday through Friday, and there's more incentive that we'll go over for both sets in a second here, but that standby crew from six AM to six PM, when the pager trips, they have four minutes to get to the firehouse. And they're what's called that standby crew. And the standby crew is made up of an officer, a driver, and two firefighters. There is going to be days when the chief's not going to be able to stay at that completely, but that is the goal. So you look at it from the outside, which is paying the financial side of it, like what are we really getting? You're meeting NFPA, you know, every day, because that's what NFPA says how you're supposed to do within a timeframe, within staffing, but the bigger picture is that you're providing a higher level of service to the civilians. The flip side of it is, how does the chief get things done around the firehouse? How does he get people to come out? He gets them to come out by paying for them, but he also has a lot of stuff that he's mandated to get done by the state of New Jersey. So by both the pay per call and also the standby crew, there's requirements that they have to meet every month and every quarter in order to receive this incentive pay. So in that incentive is these requirements. So on those requirements, the chief has to check the SCPAs, they have to watch the apparatus, they have to go over all the testing. All that will now get done because this firefighter or officer is required to be at the firehouse from seven PM to ten PM, two work nights a month. And then the other two work nights, they're also going to receive incentive pay for that. But in order to get the standby pay or to get the pay per call, they have to make those two nights. And then also to be a part or to qualify for the program, you also have to have all your certifications up to date, which in a volunteer department and even in a career department, it's very, very difficult to make sure that everybody has everything that's required of them every year. Because not only do you have to go to the county, the Tony Canal Training Center and receive firefighter one or firefighter two, you know, IMS level one, seven hundred, eight hundred, all the normal requirements, every year, there's also other certification that has to be brought up, which is your CPR, your fit test, your HAZCOM, and then other required training. This program, in order for you to qualify for it, you have to be up to date with all your certifications. So that incentivizes them to get that end of it done on their personal end, which as a chief, he really doesn't have a lot of room to stand and say, you have to go do this or you have to go do that. The person can say, well, I'm not going, or I'm going to go, I'm going to go do this tonight. You're, are you paying them for actually what they're really worth? No, you're paying them to try to give them a little bit of something so that they come out. That's the purpose of the entire program. The standby crew during the day, the chief will say, you know, he's scared that he's not going to get a full crew on there. What this is really going to do is, it's helping with the current members that you have now to get them to turn out, those times I was talking about, but what it's also going to do is, young people nowadays, if they need to make two hundred hours a week, the moment they make two hundred hours that week, they're kind of done for that week, they'll pick it up next week. They don't want to hear about long-term money, and I might see it in twenty-five years. They're looking, hey, if I can, if I can run a duty crew or a standby crew twice this week, twice this week and make an extra eighty dollars, well, eighty dollars on tour is three hundred and twenty dollars. That's a lot of money that I can make and put towards a car payment. And I think you're going to start pulling more younger people to come in and volunteer, which should hopefully increase your staffing. So it's kind of, you're kind of putting money out to hopefully recruit the volunteers, and that's the whole purpose of it. How do I retain the ones that I have now? How do I get them to do what I need to do right now? And how do I attract new ones? That's the purpose and the guts behind the entire policy. Does anybody have any questions?
Sure.
Where does the money come from? Does it come out of their budget? They set the money aside in their budget?
Yes.
No. Where's the money come from?
It's in their budget.
It's their budget. So last law, and two of the line items in the budget, we budgeted for this. We budgeted for all twelve months. And we did a, you know, we studied how many calls they went on last year from February, until we did the budget. I think it was, we started the budget around Halloween, and we finished it around, you know, just before Christmas, and I think it was actually with you guys at council. So we built the budget based off of what we thought we were going to spend. And right now, we just did a budget workup based off of how many calls they've answered between January first and May first. We did a, you know, we compiled the whole thing and decided, okay, well, if ten people, ten people turn out, it's going to cost two hundred and fifty dollars for that call, how much would it cost throughout the year? We built the budget for that. And in the policy, it says at the end of each quarter, we can reevaluate. So if something was to need further increase, or we had to pull back on something because it's starting to become out of control, we had that ability as a town.
That's what I worry about.
Yep. No, I don't blame you one bit. And it's scary for the chief too, because the chief's got to provide that level of service. He's got to hope people come out, but he's also responsible for his budget, and he's got to make sure that he does not exceed the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to mention that, the Finance Committee, we've done extensive research and work on that. So again, I think your statement of the higher level of service to our residents, that speaks volumes. I know it does to the Public Safety Committee and the Finance Director, that it's pretty hard to put a price tag on that. That's number one. Number two, if we didn't have this volunteer fire company and the services they provide, we had to go and contract out another area that has full-time firefighters. These amounts are miniscule, very, very minimum to what we would pay as a taxpayer and a resident of this town. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind, that, you know, what we're doing, again, TJ, I think you did an excellent job with the presentation. Rick, you did an excellent job in drafting the ordinance, putting in every item that really needed to be addressed, and we talked about what we didn't need in there, and Rick looked at all that and really tweaked it and made it where the chief and TJ meets their satisfaction and the director. So again, kudos to both you guys and the chief for working that ordinance up. So I see this as a new beginning for Bunaburrow and a continuance of a good job that we're doing in our fire company, and this will be an introduction tonight, and then at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing where we could hear a public comment, and that night, we'll be considering adoption. Any other questions for TJ?
No, thanks for all the hard work.
One more?
I have a question. How are we going to promote younger people to try to get involved? By throwing this out to them?
Advertising. Absolutely.
Yeah, we can advertise it.
We can advertise it and put it like that.
Yeah, we can put it on social media, let them know that we have an incentive program. Because in the policy, it says they have to be a member for six months and have their service, but during those six months, that's how I'm going to take them to get their certifications anyway. You know, and obviously, the chief is going to have to tear that man, you can't fill the truck with a bunch of brand-new people, but, you know, as far as training, getting people up to speed, you know, and other towns are doing it, and it's picking up their recruitment with younger people big time. So if you get an extra ten people out of it, I think it's a win.
Very good. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, TJ.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time then, we have ordinance. This is an ordinance creating a volunteer firefighter incentive program for the Borough Bunaburrow Fire Department, amending chapter eighteen, article one of the Code of the Borough Bunaburrow entitled Fire Suppression Prevention Services. Motion. Motion, Adams? Second. Alvarez? Roll call vote.
Jovanazi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Andalora? Yes.
Okay, I have a few items I'd like to report on from the mayor's office. Number one is an update on the three million dollar infrastructure joint project that we're doing with the BBMUA and the borough. Engineer de Blasio and I had pretty deep discussions about where the funding and how the funding's coming about. This project, this three million dollar project, is being funded by three funding sources, just to let everybody know, and the council, which is the New Jersey I-Bank, which is covering the sanitary sewer, and the roadway construction is through the NJDOT for Summer Avenue in Minnetola, I mean, in Landisville, and West Avenue in Minnetola. Some of the timeline, I asked them the other night about the timeline, so what council can expect as far as when is this going to be starting after we receive the bids, and where we're going to go from there. So he mentioned that the New Jersey I-Bank project is currently out to bid, and the bids will be due in late June, and the borough will be positioned to award the contract by June thirtieth. Number two, the construction to start on the sanitary portion of the NJIB project is September two thousand twenty-five, and that should carry us through to the spring of two thousand twenty-six. So this is going to be the longest portion of this project, which, as you can tell, we're going to be going from September all the way to the spring before all that works gets done. Thirdly, after all the utility work is done and restoration of base paving is completed from the New Jersey I-Bank project, the borough will need to bid the two NJDOT projects on Summer and West Avenue in the spring of two thousand twenty-six. So the New Jersey I-Bank is basically covering all the costs for the sewer and all the utility work. We received two grants from the NJDOT, so what has to happen is we're going to have to go out and rebid to actually do, once all the work's done, the roads. And at that point, those projects will include the paving and resurface of both roadways. All the roadways are scheduled to be totally completed and paved by the end of the summer of two thousand twenty-six. So when people ask you, is this a major undertaking and project, probably the biggest ever in Bunaburrow's history, it really is. And once again, I have to thank the BBMUA Board for their cooperation and effort. We couldn't do without them. The Borough Council's commitment and effort to make sure our roads are safe and that they're permissible to the public and that we have good roadways. So I'm really excited about this. This is a real big project for Bunaburrow, and we're going to have more to come. And talking to Mark, we do have a meeting scheduled, or will be scheduled, in July with Joe, our engineer, in Mark's office, myself, I'm going to have Bill involved in my streets and roads, also Frank, who's the head of the road department, you'll be involved with this. And we're going to actually target some roads that really need, again, sewer improvement. So the BBMUA will have a subcommittee meeting with us in July at this meeting. So we're going to have your involvement to look and identify various roads, which there are some out there that will be in need of sewer repair, some side streets. And then the borough's end, we will piggyback on that to do the repaving with you, because Mark's confident there'll be I-Bank money again for the MUA to use to replace those sewer lines. So he gave me that good news, and we're going to start looking at them, assessing that in July, and then when it's time to go after the money, we'll be ready and prepared with the roads we want to give. So that'll be upcoming in July. Thirdly, I have an update on the Minnetola Estates project. After review from our legal counsel and engineering, the current status to that project is to upgrade, revise, modify plan for lighting. So that's forthcoming. According to the dialogue that I'm getting, they're going to be starting that sometime this month. Once that's done, the repaving of Bunaburrow Drive will finally occur. And again, it projected, hopefully by the end of the summer, that'll all be done. So I got that report again from Mike Malensky, who's our special counsel on that, and also Joe and Mark de Blasio. Thank you for that. I received from County Administrator Del Rosso today from Atlantic County some current status of inquiries I made about Atlantic County and some of their roadways. And they put this one in, Lincoln Avenue and Wheat Road is currently under seventy-five percent design and anticipated construction of spring of two thousand twenty-six. This is being done through state aid-funded project. So this, I didn't even ask for, actually, the engineering department came out, and we have a little strip from Wheat Road down Lincoln, but Bunavista takes the whole way into violent. So apparently, this is on their docket for redo next year. The patch of road that I was most concerned with on Wheat Road near Lincoln Avenue, right now, is being completed, the design from the DPW, and it's an on-call contract that will be done in that area, and they're telling me that it's going to be coming soon. Next, I had the Brewster Road Drainage Improvement Project, the certification for sewer erosion and sentiment is done. The Control Plan Application Number six-three dash two-five was issued on March third, two thousand twenty-five, and will expire on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. The NJDEP has the construction activity for stormwater and general permits. This project is designed about ninety percent complete, and they're saying they're going to be going out to bid this summer of two thousand twenty-five. So that was encouraging news I received from the county today. Finally, I have a couple items today, along with myself and Jerry Marinachi, our OEM, and our chief, Ken Bar Bagley. We went to the Tony Canal Center to look into some special funding that we could be eligible for in reimbursement. This is called the Fire Management Assistance Grant Program. It's FMAG. It was from April twenty-second to May twelfth, where our fire company was dispatched out for, to do some, the brush fire, I believe it was in, up two oh six, right, chief?
Yeah, it was on the parkway.
Off the parkway. So they went there for assistance. Jerry was notified, and the chief, we went there today. Jerry filled out the form, application to get special funding back for our time that was put in. So any money back to the borough helps us. And then Ken's following up with the different information they're going to need, specifically of what we used, the timeframe, the amount of guys, and all that'll come back for reimbursement. So I want to thank the chief and Jerry today for their effort going to Tony Canal Center and pursuing that. Lastly, I have been in touch with both our tax assessor and tax collector regarding our tax rate from Atlantic County. Both answered me that they're hopefully will have that rate at the end of the month, our next council meeting. As I mentioned to council before, and I think everybody knows in the public, we adopted our budget. We had a one point three cent increase, and the school tax rate in the borough went down by two point four cents. So the county, again, based on our assessment, I'm assuming, or I'm looking at it, to also come down, to help our residents another year of not having an overall tax increase. Again, once we get those rates, I'm going to ask council to jot down in your departments, your highlights, start doing that now, as I'm going to send another newsletter out with the tax bills this summer, to let our residents know and have a person, it goes right in the envelope with the tax bill, so this does not cost any extra money to send out this flyer. But it's basically last year, we had a one-sheet flyer that mentioned what's going on in my office and all the departments up on council.
It's also going to be posted on website.
And it will be posted on the website also. The president of council just told me so. The residents will have a vehicle through the website and also getting a personalized letter to their home. So that concludes my report. At this time, we're going to go to public comment. Anyone wishing to comment will have a five-minute per speaker time. You can read that. So at this time, I'm going to ask for motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Motion.
Motion to Stephan. Second. Andalora. Roll call vote.
Jovanazi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Andalora?
Yes.
Stephan.
Yes.
Yes.
And Alora?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to address the mayor and council, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Julia Shiford. May I report this?
Sure.
Okay. They'll just help me for later. Okay. So guess what we're talking about tonight? The right-of-way for the Methodist Church on Central Avenue. So the number one thing we're asking is if we could be placed on the next agenda because the, our lawyer, John Coslow, is out of the country on vacation. So is it possible for us to be on the next agenda so he could attend?
Sure.
Okay. All right. I was asked to ask some of these questions. We were requesting a checklist of required items needed by the Borough so that we have an idea of what we need to do step by step by step. Can someone do that for us?
I'm going to refer our solicitor.
The information that we have is that this is not a right-of-way, that this is actually fee simple owned by the Borough. Under the law, the Borough has an obligation to sell the property for fair market value. So the process will be that it will be advertised for sale. Whomever acquires it, acquires it. The requirement is going to be that whomever acquires it must do a subdivision or redivision because what we want them to do is create an all-inclusive deed so that there's not this little strip of property anymore. So say, for example, the church does in fact acquire the property at the sale, then whomever it is that's representing you will have to retain a surveyor to survey the strip that's going to be attached to your property, then an all-inclusive deed, so that the first deed, transferring the surveyed piece to the Methodist Church occurs and then simultaneously a new deed with the existing property that belongs in a Methodist Church as well as the new property if the church buys it. So it's all one deed.
Is there, does this show on any deed right now?
Yes, it's on the tax map. I'm not seeing it as a separate lot and block. What's probably going to need to happen is whomever is representing you will do a title search on that property and it'll assure the proper owner of the property. And you will do that anyway just because you don't know if there's any liens that are on this property or anything else. So you'll do a title search that will reveal the exact property, its owner, and whether there's any liens or encumbrances on that property. So when you have that done, that's when we'll be sure of the ownership, although from what we see, it goes back for years and years and years. So the only thing that we can see is that it is a separate lot and block, a separate piece of property. For example, a right-of-way is, say, a street, and you look at your deed, you own the property into the middle of the street. If that right-of-way is, goes away, you still own that property. But if the street is owned by the Borough and you want a piece of it, you have to acquire it. That's the difference between a right-of-way and what we believe is fee simple title.
So can we start that process now?
I wouldn't because, you know, somebody may come in there and outbid you, who knows? I don't know. I would wait until the legislation is adopted. The first portion of the legislation will be the authorization to sell the property and the second portion will be the accepting the bid from the person who's the high bid. And in that ordinance for the sale of the property, there will be a requirement that there will be an all-inclusive deed created within a period of time.
Okay, so the authorization to sell, when will that start?
After the Borough concludes that the property will be for sale.
Okay. Can we have a date? An idea?
You just said next council meeting and the mayor said yes.
Oh terrific, okay.
So that will be the first piece is where the Borough Governing Body says that they will sell the property and here are the requirements for acquisition. And then the second piece will be the actual sale, the bid.
So we could put that on the next agenda?
Yeah, we can put the authorization to sell on the next agenda.
Okay.
So this property hasn't been appraised yet, right?
It has not. We were talking about just seeing if we can get an assessment of it and use that from our tax assessment.
Tax assessment.
Oh, tax assessor would do that?
Well, maybe. They're not often, they're not required to do that under their job, but you know, we're going to ask them to do it.
We could ask one.
It'd be an easy way to do it.
Yeah, we could ask.
So right now, no one's been paying taxes on this property, correct?
No, because the Borough owns it.
Because the Borough owns it, okay. And have other, I understand that there are other people who have gone through this that it was just given to them.
If there was a right-of-way, as I said before, then all the Borough needs to do is vacate the right-of-way and then the property lines meet. Because if the property lines are like this and there's a right-of-way, they have the right to use both parcels. But if the right-of-way goes away, the deed still exists, they take it to the center of the road. This is different. The property lines go right to the border of that strip. So if you vacate a right-of-way, then the property, legal descriptions or the property lines are to the property line.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you for the yard sale. We had a wonderful time. Even though the weather wasn't terrific, we had a lot of people come. Thank you.
My daughter got rained on, so. We tried.
Anyone else?
It would take me too long to get up there to try and manipulate my way up there. Joe in Beresmont, Pacific Avenue, Minnetola. Tomorrow being trash day, I'm getting ready to get put my trash out and it reminded me, you had talked about one meeting about the possibility of the Borough getting the large rollout containers for the entire Borough. Have we gone any further with that?
We haven't right now because I think I mentioned in one of the meetings, maybe you were not here during the budget time, where we were going to investigate that with Atlantic County to do some savings. Unfortunately, they came back and they don't have enough trucks to provide that service. So we had to, had to write from the county that they couldn't do that type of upgrade or consideration, we would have to wait later in the year when they obtained some trucks and put that on docket for next year consideration. And then we would go, remember I made, the council remembers I gave that report where at that time I would, again, investigate the cost factors. They should come in lower, it'd be more efficient all the way around, and then we would make that investment. But until such time where we're having the current services the way they are, we can't make that commitment right now.
And when the time comes, do the taxpayers pay for the container or does?
Now, the Borough will, that's another way of repayment. The Borough would take that on. I mean, you wouldn't individually, homeowners or businesses.
So each of them would get a?
You would get that and we would handle that tomorrow.
The first time.
And that would be included with the savings joint and the cost factors. It's a whole system. But I'm excited for that to happen for next year because it's going to provide a lot better efficiency. Yeah, everybody will get a new, whether you have one or not, you'll get a new trash container.
Okay.
We're working on it.
I won't go buy one, right?
Don't buy one yet.
Okay, don't worry. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Tony, happy to meet you. I just wanted to say how nice it was that the unit coaches put together that home run derby. We had that.
Is that on?
I can't hear him. It's on.
Put it on. Is it on?
Whatever.
The screen.
Here it is.
How nice it was on Saturday, even though the weather was not good, the home run derby that the Buna baseball coaches put together. The man that passed away is our neighbor, thirty years old, and he left a little kid and three small children. So those funds went to him and I just think it was so nice, even though the weather was not good. How many kids came out to partake in that? It was just, I went and it was just, it was so nice. And I, that's the kind of community that you love to see. And I know she was moved by her whole family, his family was there, all the kids were there and it was wonderful. So.
Very good.
That's your, how was your neighbor?
Yeah. He was like thirty-two.
Thanks.
Remember your little kid? Thank you.
Thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, any motion to close the public hearing? Motion Adams? Roll call vote.
Juvanasi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
And Alora?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items of business which are not controversial or do not require individual discussion. A motion approving the consent agenda is moved, seconded, and voted upon one item at a time by the Borough Council. If any discussion is requested on a consent agenda item, it's removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. So I have Resolution 115-25, the governing body certification of the annual audit, Resolution 116-25, a resolution authorizing the hiring of an emergency medical technician, Ethan McCall. Next, we have Resolution 117-25. This is an approval to submit a grant application MA 2026, resurfacing of Atlantic Avenue and Janet Street, Project 001173, and execute an agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Next, we have Resolution 118-25. This is an approval to submit a grant application LTPF 2025, resurfacing of Friendship Road and Malini Avenue, 00073, and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Next, I have bills paid as listed, clerk's report, minutes of the closed session meeting May 27, 2025, and minutes of the meeting of May 27, 2025. Motion Adams, second, and Alora. Roll call vote.
Juvanasi?
Yes.
Alvarez?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
And Alora?
Yes.
Next, we have solicitor's report. Mr. Tanana, you have anything?
I have nothing more to report.
Okay, very good. Engineers report. Mr. Monet?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, real quick to just recover. We're opening the consent agenda. That's just to apply for the two NJDOT grants. There's no real update. They're due July 1st, but we're working on them. There's three projects coming up. The resurfacing of the tennis courts. Our pre-construction meeting was held last week and Landberg intends to start construction by the end of the month.
Beautiful.
The second capital project would be the restroom building at the park here. We'll be opening bids next week on June 17th. And finally, the I-Bank, which is the large sanitary sewer project. We are also opening bids on June 17th of next week.
Nice. Very good.
Joe, excuse me, what time? Ten o'clock?
One is ten and one is eleven. I'd have to check on which.
If you could say steps times, I'll give you the steps.
Yep.
The tennis courts has already been approved? It's already awarded?
Yeah, they signed in returns contracts, so.
They're just ready to start back. You were at the last meeting, but everything just ready to start now.
Correct.
Construction, everything else is in place, so. Yeah, that'll be tennis courts and pickleball. I'll be adding that, pickleball courts. So we're excited about that. That's new coming to Buna Borough. Any other questions for the engineers? Thank you, Joe. Any unfinished business to come before council? Any new business to come before council?
We've been busy. We've been really busy.
Yeah, I have some new business. The, the mayor and I are both on the Borough's Land Use Board. And we started getting some subcommittees together of council, of the MUA, and of the Land Use Board, and those three subcommittees take on some growth in the Borough. We, we see here, and especially sitting on the, on the Budget Committee, that our expenses keep going up and we're just keep taxing and taxing and taxing our residents. We, we need growth and we need to help our town grow in many different ways. Sitting on these boards is really easy to just sit there and approve or deny applications, but it takes an extra effort as members of these boards to sit there and, and be aggressive in redoing our master plan, which needs to be redone. Thinking of new businesses in our town and how do we get them? Thinking of new development in our town and how do we get it? And all of that will put more money into our budgets and give our, our residents here hopefully a break or we could even out a little bit. Because we just, the price of everything keeps going up and we're not taking in the equivalent of money that equals our expenses. So as a business, that's just not a good business practice. So the mayor and I sat and, and I just thought it was something that we should do. So we brought the idea up to the Land Use Board at the last meeting and the Land Use Board was 100% for it. Since then, I know the message has been passed over to the MUA and I believe the MUA is interested in forming a subcommittee. And then we're going to get the, a subcommittee from council and these three subcommittees can look at all that. But between the Land Use Board, council, and the MUA, they're the three key groups that need to be on the right track to do things in this town, to make our town better and give us some revenue so that we're not always working on a shoestring budget. I mean, that's what I call it. You know, I saw it when I was police chief and even as of today. I mean, if, if something drastic goes wrong, you know, we're all scurrying for money. George knows that better than anybody. And it doesn't have to be that drastic. That's how close our budget is to keep taxation down. So we came up with this idea and we're going to, I wanted to tell council about it tonight that we're going to be working on it. And I'm really excited to, to sit down with these three subcommittees and give ourselves some projects that we could work on and go forward with this town.
And again, I think that it opens the line of communication.
It's been needed.
Yeah, between the three bodies too. It gives a better line of communication to know what's going on, what one board's passing, what one board's doing.
That's correct. We talked about that, that sitting on council, the mayor and I hear, you know, the, the public and the private side of what's going on in council. Then the two of us sit on the Land Use Board and we hear about the public and the private side of what's going on with the Land Use Board. But the rest of council don't know what's going on with the Land Use Board. The Land Use Board doesn't know what's going on with council. And then you have the MUA out there that, you know, doesn't get our agendas, we don't get their agendas. I mean, we, these three groups really have to come together and, and look into the future as to how we're going to develop our town.
Yeah. So this, this is a beginning. This will be a step in the right direction that the council president presented tonight. And again, we already talked to some members of the MUA. Land use has already been briefed. And again, I think it's something that will be vital, will help our town move in a real positive, open direction for the future.
Great idea, Mayor.
Yeah.
We've been needing it for a long time.
Yeah, so we're going to.
We have to bring businesses to here.
Yeah, so we're going to do that. There's a lot involved. Again, value with the inspections department. And again, the master plan, that's something that's been on the back burner from what I understand for a while now. This needs to be revisited. So again, with the input of all three bodies, we can really make some intelligent decisions to move it forward.
And share all of our ideas and share all of our agendas.
How do you go about approaching the businesses to like, come to Buna Borough?
Well, that's, that's what I discussed. You know, my, my, my discussion at the Land Use Board was, you know, I'm tired of seeing businesses get built and established just outside of our, our boundary.
Yeah.
So I want to make, I want to make, yeah, I want to make our town as built up and as positive as our boundaries are. So how do we do that? Pine Lands? Pine Lands is a big hoop to jump through, but maybe there's redevelopment ideas and suggestions where some things are waived and some things are made easier. There's, you know, sewer and water is a big, is a big issue. So there's ways, I think, that we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I remember years ago, I believe there's an ordinance in the books about taxing incentive for businesses to come here.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different ways, but we all need to be on the same page.
Right.
And getting the three major organizations or, you know, in our town involved, and if the three of us, those three organizations, we could do it. That's our core, right there. The MUA, council, and the land use board.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll start with that and move forward there. Thanks for the report, Doug. It's good. Anyone else with new business? Okay, next meeting of mayor and council will be on June 23, 2025, at 6:30. That's going to be a pretty special meeting, because we're going to have one of our longtime employees, you want to mention Doug, that works in our EMS department. She's retiring at the end of the month, so.
Over thirty years of service.
Thirty-eight years?
Over thirty years of service, yeah.
Yeah, I say close to thirty-eight years, almost forty years of service, Rhonda Searola. So what we're going to be doing is having her here at the meeting, we'll be making Rhonda Searola Day, we'll be presenting to her with something and putting her, an appreciation of her dedicated years of service. She'll go on with some big names up there in the middle of our Buena Borough wall of fame. Rhonda has served our community very, very well, and very, very dedicated. So that will be leading off our next council meeting on the 23rd. Okay, I need a motion. Motion to adjourn. Okay, Adams?
Second.
Second, and Delora, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.